Okay, first off, this meeting is now called to order. And before we actually get started, I'd like to welcome our new member, Mr. David Jitski. Appreciate you coming on board.
Thank you, Mr. [inaudible].
And first item on the agenda is election of chairman.
I'll make that nomination to elect Dicky Leonard as chairman.
Okay.
I'll make a nomination to Larry Mosley as chairman.
Okay, we've got two motions. You got a second? Second? All in favor?
Second? What are we, second?
Second? The two motions.
We've got two competing. We've got to take a vote on each. It's a procedure question of mine, but I think you have two individual votes.
You've got two nominations, so you've got to poll the board for the votes for each one. You won't need a second. There'll just be nominations at this point. So the first, you would need to take a vote on the first nomination, assuming there's no other nominations. There can't be other nominations. Hearing no further nominations, then you would need to take a vote, all members in favor of Mr. Leonard, and then all members in favor of Mr. Mosley.
Okay, I guess we do them in that order, don't we? First one is nomination votes for me as chairman. Aye, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, next we got votes for Mr. Mosley. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay. Mr. Mosley?
Your chair.
Thank you.
I just slid you over the board. We'll switch you around completely next morning.
Okay. Next on the agenda is election of vice chairman. I'll make a motion to nominate Sidney Cobb as that position. I'll make a motion to nominate Robert Slade. Okay, we have two nominations. All in favor of Mr. Smith, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Aye. Those in favor, Mr. Cobb, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
Mr. Cobb is the vice chair. Next on the agenda is establish date and place of regular meetings. I'll make a motion, keep everything as it is. Second? Have a motion, do I hear a second? I'll say. Motion is second. All in discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Our meetings will be at 5:30 on the third Tuesday of each month at the General District Court Room. Next is rules of procedure.
Make a motion that we have rules of procedures as spread.
Have a motion, do I hear a second? I'll say. Motion is second. All in discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Next on the agenda is proposed abandonment of streets at the public hearing. County Board Supervisor.
Mr. Chairman, just a second. We have some last minute corrections to the agenda. So the agenda sheets that the public has, that is listed as a road name change as well, but that's just a typo error on the heading. The body of the public hearing was correct, so just wanted to make that clear if this is an abandonment of streets.
And that's the first one, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Lee County Board Supervisor will hold the public hearing on Tuesday, January 17th, 2023, at 5:30 PM in the General District Court Room at Lee County Courthouse located Jonesville, Virginia. Purpose of public hearing will be to receive public comment on the proposed abandonment of six streets on Flat Properties on Valerian Long and Carrollon Long in the Whitechapel Magisterial District of Lee County, Virginia. Drawing number C-9519 dated March 15th, 2022. Property is located on the south side of US Highway 58, approximately 1.9 miles east of town of Roseville. If abandonment is approved, title to the street will be transferred to the adjacent property owner. Is there anyone here to comment on that?
I got it a little too quick here. I'm sorry. I had, I heard you survey just a few days ago.
If you would give us your name and your address.
My name is Larry Long, Roseville, Virginia, and my wife Carol is here. We're the property owners. We purchased this property from Whit Court or from the Owens Trust, from Whit Owens, and with the full intention of building a home. And I'd already owned so many lots up in the Upper Corner I bought years ago. And so we worked out, I bought the entire field down to the highway. And then we get to look, and I had a survey done by, Charlie Parker's up here, and it come up all these streets that was put in there back when they had put this together as a subdivision back maybe in the late 50s, early 60s. And they're legitimate streets. They was, I knew they were there on the plan, but I just thought that it was a suggestion and not something that actually had to have action taken on. So it really hinders us from even planning on where to put our home because of all the zoning restrictions around streets. And the streets serve no purpose for anyone other than Mr. Owens, and he has the farm behind me and along beside me. It doesn't affect the farm to the right, the route trust. They don't even go to them. And so Mr. Whit Owens, he is in full support of it. He sent an email to Dane here and myself, and I hope you all got a copy of it. It doesn't restrict his access at all. The Whit Court Street is not one of the streets that's being asked to be shut down. He owns all of that and so much to the left and the right. And on that street, there's a farm road that they used always until a few years ago when they logged. Then they decided to make a logging, a whole loading area down there. And since that time, it's just been more convenient for anybody going back to the farm. There's a hunter, a fellow that leases it for hunting, and Big Ferrison, he leases the corn off of it. But their access is still there. They're, I'm not taking none of that away. There's still plenty of access, even better road going to it, but I need it. These roads abandoned so they can become part of the deed, so I'm not restricted in any way on where I put my house and put my driveway and whatever else I'm going to put, barn or what have you up there for my home. So that's what I got to say about there.
Thank you. Anyone else have public expression on the abandonment of streets?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make that motion to ban those streets.
Let me close. I'll close the public hearing on the abandonment of streets. I appreciate that. I have a motion. Second? To approve? And I've got to say, any discussion? If none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Next is proposed road name change. Lee County Board Supervisor will hold the public hearing on Tuesday, January 17th, 2023, at 5:30 PM in the General District Court Room at Lee County Courthouse located in Jonesville, Virginia. Purpose of the public hearing is to receive public comment on a proposed road name change. Ralph and Leslie Gillie are requesting that Steve Breaiser Drive be changed and want to follow him now. Hackamore Lane, Sunset Drive, or Shepherd's Drive. Anyone here to express any concerns about this?
Mr. Chairman, I would make the board aware Sunset Drive is already in the same street, so that one is not eligible.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Did the property owner say what they prefer?
Well, the Hackamore is the first on the list. Actually, there is another road with Shepherd's Drive in it, but it has a first name as well, so I would suggest it not be used either. They're on different ends of the county, but I would go with the Hackamore, which is the preferred.
I'll make that motion. What, if you need to close that? Yeah, I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion to change the name to Hackamore Lane. I'll make that motion. Thank you. And I'll entertain for a second. Second? Have a motion is second. Any discussion? If none, all in favor to change the name of this road to Hackamore Lane, signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Departmental reports, building inspector. These are in your ballot packets. And then Constitutional officer, treasurer report. And that moves us down to public expression. And if you have anything to express, limit to three minutes, give us your name and your address, please. Anyone here for public expression?
My name is Debbie Arkrit. I'm from Keokee. At our October meeting, several people asked the board to rescind the amendment that was added to our landfill ordinance on private landfills in the town. We've not heard any response from anybody on the board. So what we ask is some respect, at least an answer for yes or a no that you will rescind the amendment or re-vote and remove the word private. You all have asked the planning commission to meet tomorrow evening to rezone certain sites named landfill as part of the reason. From what I understand, 12 of those sites are in the Keokee-St. Charles area. We'd like to know where those sites are specifically before that meeting tomorrow evening, and if any of the sites are adjourned. We feel like we've got a right to know before the meeting, so if anybody has a concern, they know to come and speak up tomorrow evening. So we're asking that you tell us tonight where those sites are.
I don't know anything about it. I don't know.
Mr. Chairman, they're not voting to rezone. They're not considering a rezoning of anything. They're considering a change in the language of the zoning ordinance that would simply allow private landfills, which matches the siding ordinance change that this board took action on. Now, the parcels you're talking about are already, right now, the only zone that would allow landfill of any kind, whether it's a public entity operator or private operator, is the M2 manufacturing zone. The only M2 manufacturing zones that I'm aware of in the coalfield area is coal tiples. Mining property is not rezoned. It's simply a resource overlay which allows mining to take place as long as they have proper permits from the state. So the only, the only locations that could potentially be used would be coal tipple areas, which are typically fairly small and probably not feasible. Well, I won't say probably.
So what you're saying, mined, previously mined land is not going to be made available for any?
Not as it's currently zoned, unless it's zoned M2, and I'm not aware of any M2 zoning on previously mined land.
Then what about the amendment? We've not heard anything. I mean, don't you think we deserve a response one way or the other? The board, what I really don't understand even about the rezoning, the paper said the board asked for it. It said the board of supervisors.
Well, that's, I'm not aware of anything like that.
Well, that was the original request of the board. That was the original motion of the board to request the planning commission consider a change to the zoning ordinance to allow private landfills. After reviewing, after leaving the meeting and researching other county ordinances, I found the siding ordinance, which was adopted in 88. And I made the board aware that prior to making any change in the zoning ordinance, you would have to have a change in the siding ordinance to begin with because it did not allow private landfills either. It only allowed publicly operated. So instead of a one-step process, it became a two-step process. One, to change the siding ordinance. And then the second, once that was completed, I went back to what the original motion was to ask the planning commission to take action and consider changing the text of the ordinance to allow private landfills in the zoning ordinance.
Which will include tiples in Keokee?
Any coal tipple that is currently zoned in M2, most of them I think are.
They're requesting that they will be rezoned?
They're not being rezoned. They're already M2 zones. The zoning ordinance as it's written now allows county-operated landfills in an M2 zone. All, the proposed change to that would allow county or private-operated landfills to operate in an M2 zone.
Okay. What about the response from the board about changing the amendment?
There is no.
There is, we have no response?
No. We voted on it. That's it?
Yes, sir. You voted on it, but several of the citizens ask you, ask the entire board.
We took it into consideration, Ms. Arden.
Yes, sir. And your response?
And your time is up.
Well, part of my time was used by Mr. Cole.
That buzzer went off before you start talking. Anyone else for public expression?
Good evening. Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Richard. Richard Schur on Evans Drive. This is really a question I have about the sheriff's department. I'm assuming, and maybe I'm incorrect, that there is a table of organization for the sheriff's department, i.e. you have a sheriff, you have an assistant, you have deputies, you have investigators. Is there a table of organization? And if there is, how many short law enforcement officers for the county are we? And the reason I'm asking this is, a call at late evening to the dispatcher requesting someone show up, just to pick that are done, and being told that we're short people, we can't get there in less than 30 minutes. 30 minutes will get you in trouble, one way or the other, with something you're going on. I'd just like to know if we are short, how many are we short? Do we have a T.O.? Do we have a table of organization? And is it being used? Aye.
Thank you. Anyone else for public expression? If not, I'll close the public expression. Next thing on the agenda is approval of amendments, December 2022, regular meetings. I'll entertain a motion for approval.
Mr. Chairman, I'll just extend to those committees. Statement forward to the way down was a question that I asked. It was written as if I said is true, that it was a question that was asked about what knowledge should be for the legislative reception. Subject to that change, being that I asked about it, I would make a motion to approve the amendments.
I have a motion, do I hear a second? Second? I'll say. If none, entertain a motion for approval. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Next is approval of refund. Appalachian Explosives LLC, Eric and Kerry Evans. Our commissioner of revenue? I'll make a motion, a motion to approve refunds for both Appalachian Explosives LLC and Eric and Kerry Evans. Thank you. I have a motion, do I hear a second? Second? Have a motion is second. Any discussion? If none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. County administrator reports that payroll warrants have been issued. Next on the agenda is approval of disbursements. I'll make a motion to pay the bill. I have a motion, do I hear a second? I'll say. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Aye. Motion carries. Next is delegations. Smart Scale project, Terry Cox.
My name is Terry Cox from Steepleville, Virginia. And Mr. Chairman and board, thank you for your public service, and I do appreciate it very much. I'm asking that you consider filling out another AVDOT Smart Scale application. The deadline is August the 1st, turning in for the next 2,000 feet on the US 58 Pal Mountain Pass and lanes. I've had a lot of neighbors and citizens in the county that's been so positive about it, and a lot of our citizens go that direction to work and to their advanced health care and social activities and big trucks hauling our mercantile. And I talked to Dane a couple months ago and said we needed a cop's number to put in that application, but I'd just like to consider, I ask you if you'd consider having it turned D and B August 1st, so that's when the kickoff is to start scoring those next applications for the state route. Then I'm going to be at the meeting this spring. I've been going every year since 1992 to try to help the citizens get some improvement to never miss a meeting in Bristol and Roanoke, and trying to help the citizens with a better road in that direction. And I'd really appreciate it if you think about having a Smart Scale application for the next 2,000 feet. And thank you, Chairman Mosley and the board, for your public service. I appreciate it very much.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is delegations. Heart of Appalachia, Kimberly Smith, interim executive director.
Hello, everyone, and thank you all for having me here tonight. So I just want to take a few minutes of your time to give you some updates on Heart of Appalachia. And for those of you all who are not familiar with the organization, we were created by the General Assembly in 1993 to market the seven westernmost counties of the state, or the coalfield counties, as a tourism destination. So we take a lot of focus on outdoor recreation. We do a lot of focus on motorcycles and sports cars because our region has the Kirby Backroads that appeal to those demographics. If you look on the right of your folder, I have a, just a letter from me kind of introducing me and the organization. On the back of that page are some of our successes from 2022, and we're very proud of what we've done this year. Appalachian Backroads website, which is one of the websites we maintain, we increased the traffic by 21% over the past year. And I take a very data-driven approach to marketing. As a steward of taxpayer dollars, I feel it's my duty to only do the marketing campaigns that we can measure and show you all the results from. We've distributed and directly mailed nearly, actually over 81,000 pieces of print material since I printed this paper. We partner with regional news outlets to feature trip itineraries, and we do several different print publications. We do a visitor guide. We do a map of the Appalachian Backroads that features 14 different routes that we have put together, and we've worked with Roadrunner magazine on those routes. We saw, we saw a 230% increase in reach on our Appalachian Backroads social media page and 117% increase for the Heart of Appalachia pages. And moving over to Instagram, over 4,000% increase for Appalachian Backroads and 239% increase for Heart of Appalachia. So we're seeing that people really want what we have to offer here now. They're wanting to get away from the crowds. They're wanting to experience, you know, the outdoors, and we're really setting at a great time to be marketing to these people. As far as our website visitors, the top location for our website visitors for the entire year of 2022 was New York City. Atlanta, Georgia is in the top three, and Chicago, Illinois is in the top three, Nashville, Tennessee, and Charlotte, North Carolina. Those are our top five visitor locations. At the bottom, you have three QR codes that will take you directly to our websites. And then you have a couple pages that just show you who we partner with. And that's just a list of some of our partners, but not all of them. And Lee County has been a great partner to us in the past as far as local contributions to our marketing budget, and we do appreciate that and hope that we will see that continue in the future. So if you all have any questions for me on that or what we're doing for marketing, just feel free to reach out to me. You have my business card there. Moving over to the left side, and I know these are probably the numbers that you all like to see in your positions. 2021, according to a economic, a third-party economic impact study, the economic impact to Lee County, which is a combination of direct, indirect, and induced spending, was $28 million. And the overall region, the Heart of Appalachia region, which is seven counties and the city of Norton, visitor spending was over $253 million. So when you see those numbers in black and white, they're very impressive, and we're very proud of those numbers. Back on the left side of your folders, there's another business card. That has a QR code and a website, so if any of you have a business in your, in your districts that you would like to see out to our website, feel free to pass that along to them and have them to reach out to us because we maintain over 700 listings for the region on our website and on Virginia Tourism's website. Again, just feel free to reach out if you have any questions for me. Thank you.
Are you familiar with the Pal Valley Electric Cooperative magazine?
I am not.
Everybody that's on Pal Valley Electric Cooperative gets the magazine, and in that magazine, they break the state up into, I think it's three districts. They tell you what's happening over the next probably two months in those districts. I mean, there's never even, police got wise. I mean, there's never even a police dot wise, nothing. Probably southwest of Floyd County is ever in there. I don't know if there's a cost to it or not, but if it's free, it might be something worth looking into.
Okay. If you don't mind, would you email me and just send me that information?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Next on the delegation is Spirithead Trails. And I don't think it is, well, it's a slim approach.
Uh, no, hardly.
Between jacket and.
Well, that's a, I'm not the plan to hand come and represent Spirithead Trails. I am the Assistant Executive Director. Been with the organization as Chairman of the Board for about 14 years. And I wanted to bring you an update of where we are with things, to see some major faces. We have done a lot of work on the Stone Mountain Trail. Trailhead being there at Lehman Field. Had an excavator with a rock hammer breaking up the rock and finding the trail and making it a lot more easy to traverse it. It is our shortest trail system. It had been essentially all black, black being difficult. We have brought a lot of it up to blue gray, being moderate. Next one on the agenda is a potential project there on 58, St. Charles area. We are awaiting the NEPA study to be finished. I think it's down to the point for whatever regulatory agent that's in the historical or potential historical artifacts archaeological study. After that, I think we should be able to proceed with it. There has been a lot of interest of late in the development of trails along Stone Mountain all the way down to Cumberland Gap. Friday before last, we attended a meeting in the town of Cumberland Gap, Tennessee. And they are in the process of applying for a grant through the National Park Service to do a planning agenda for trails coming in and out of, to out of Cumberland Gap that would be more or less the hub. While we were there, some of them were on Zoom. One representing the Boone's Trace, which is solely referred to in Kentucky. They use it in exchange for the Wilderness Road, what we are familiar with here. Another gentleman was with the Warrior's Path. I felt the thing I could think of Warrior's Path was over St. Park there in Kingsport. I learned a lot. That path goes on up into Ohio and slits out. I introduced the concept, working with Doc Fleener on several historic reservations. He tells me that twice, if not as many as five times, when Boonsborough was under siege, they sent runners back to Carter's Fork near Natural Toll for help. One time, two of them were knocking on the door of the fort. One of them shot the back of an arrow. I proposed to have a commemorative run to commemorate that feat. It has really sparked a lot of interest within Kentucky and Tennessee. And then coming about in 2026 is the 250th birthday of our country. There is a lot being done on the eastern part of the state for that celebration. I found out today that there is an organization that they're wanting each county to be a part of for this celebration. Is, I believe, virginia250.org. And it requires a resolution from the Eastern Board of Supervisors to join that celebration. Or they may be eligible for funding of different events that would cover through that. We've been working, trying to get more events, working on horse trails. Hopefully, we can get them into the area. One gentleman has a campground at the foot of White Rocks near the park down there. He's laying out different trails potentially for horses. We would really want to work with them on that. If you all have any thoughts or questions, be happy to answer to the best of my ability.
I have one question. Where were we at on the river access?
That, as I understood it, had a postponement and it was revamped. We did meet with the people in Tennessee DVA, the Nature Conservancy. We went down and marked them, but that is the last I heard of on that. That would certainly be a very viable to find out where that lies now. And I haven't heard anything of late. They were wanting to access the river mile. And I don't know whether that speaks for it or not. I think that's pretty ambitious. But when we hear more, we're ready to start working with it. Also, try to find out and get back with you on where that lies now.
Appreciate it. Any more questions?
Thank you all.
Thank you, Jack. Next on the agenda is Airport Authority, Jason Spears, Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, I asked if we tabled that for a technical session of prospective business.
One.
Did the airport.
Okay. I have a motion to table. I hear second.
Second.
Motion in second, all favors in the five of saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion carries. Next on the agenda is old business, Flatwoods Convenience Center cameras.
We thought that they were going to be able to set home for the camera last week, but that did not happen. Not sure exactly what to, what to delay them on that, but Power Valley Electric is doing that. But we're hopeful that they will get it done. Once that is set, they have the boxes already built for the cameras and the DVR. They'll be ready to install it. So we're just waiting on the public to say.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I made, the motion on that originally was two parts. As I recall, it was one to redo the signs and to include in the signs. And if you see a literal violation, call this number, which would be the literal coordinator's number. But I understand that the sign still hadn't been put up and that was left off the sign.
Okay, I'll check on that.
Anything else? Next is the county code recodecations.
Still under review.
Excuse me, I didn't hear.
Still undergoing review.
Go to the next one.
Rescue squad funding information. I don't have a full list on insurance costs. I've got partial list. Still lacking a couple of departments that have reported yet. And one, I got the building only, but not the vehicles. So it's a little bit incomplete. I can share what I've got. Just get you all copies of it and make you aware of what the address comes in. I also requested the same information from fire departments. And I've got the, I lack, about looks like four departments on that. But I'll get you what I've got. And you also, did you want us to go ahead and compile a number of calls that have been running over, say, the last six months?
I think that was a request.
Okay, I'll have that by the next meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I made.
Yes.
Yeah, is there, did any of the other departments give any response to why they haven't responded back to you with your information request?
Some have gotten, I sent this out on a text because I had everyone's cell phone, all the chiefs and captains from back when we were notified of COVID cases. So I sent this out as a text message. I got responses back from several. Some that had responded that they would get me the information, but I still don't have it. But some I've gotten no response at all.
Is there a reason though that they don't have a response? I mean, I know they have plenty of time because I know about when you send them out. I spoke to all the departments.
Well, I sent out a second text last week just to say, you know, I need to get this information.
See, that's one of the problems we've had in the past. You send out a request and, you know, there's some departments, it's almost like they just refuse to send you back what you want.
I'll get a.
I'd like to have a list of who hasn't responded.
Right. I'll give you the list of what I've got. This has every department squad and so the ones that don't have any information, any one of them have responded yet. But I'll make follow-up contact. I'll use a different means to make follow-up contact this week.
Almost like this, so if they haven't responded, they don't need any money.
I agree.
That's my.
Do you care to tell us now who has not responded?
Haven't gotten a response back on that from Blackwater, these are fire departments, Blackwater, Dryden, Jasper and Jonesville. Rescue, Dryden and St. Charles. Now, Dryden, I did get a text message yesterday saying that they would get me that information, but I don't have it yet. And I'll, but of the rescue, St. Charles is the only other one that I haven't gotten anything from. And then on fire, Blackwater, Jasper and Jonesville, I haven't gotten anything back from them.
How many are there in terms of rescue, I mean, departments?
Six.
So can we, we don't have enough information to make a pretty good decision based on having two thirds of them? And one of them that's not responding is the one who doesn't take any calls or doesn't take many. They're holding up the fair split of money by not responding.
Right. I can, I can give you a copy of what I've got here tonight for you.
I wouldn't mind to make a decision about it. I mean, we've been talking about it for six months and the last time we counted, Jonesville's making 46% of the calls, but they get the same amount of money as somebody that doesn't make the two or three calls a week. And, you know, now we've got an issue where Cleveland County's coming across the line without authority, I don't think, to pick up people in Lee County. That shouldn't be hap, especially not in the daytime. I mean, there's going to be some incentive for not taking calls.
Right. The issue with Cleveland County or after giving that some more thought, they probably, if they're requested by our dispatch center, they can probably provide that under mutual aid without having operating authority since it's an emergency call.
Did you say there was just one rescue that hadn't responded?
Well, no, Dryden and St. Charles. Dryden, he sent a text and said that he would get me that information, but I don't have it.
What's the ballpark figure on what it's costing for insurance?
For property and equipment. It's, I've got one that's paying about $13,500 a year, one $7,500. One provided a building only. I don't have, and that's, that's big and that's new. And he wasn't able to talk to the treasurer to get the information on the vehicles. And then another one is $12,800. So you got a couple of departments that are in the $12,000, $13,000 range. One that's $7,500.
Why is there so much difference?
I, I didn't ask for copies of their policies.
The next question I got is, could we not consolidate all of them? We're giving them the money to pay for it anyway. Could we not consolidate all of them and get a better insurance rate?
I think they're all going with Segco now, aren't they?
I don't know.
I think they are. I asked that question. And that's what I was told, that they all have to get the misrags. But going to get into what he said, I'm just assuming this. But probably it's based on how many vehicles that you've got, you're housing there too. Some of them have several more vehicles than the other.
And you're including their, the structure in that. So Jonesville's got a pretty new structure. And some of, you know, it's a big structure.
Right. And some of them, and I didn't, I didn't give you this, but some have additional costs. They provide workers' car for medical only. There's one at least that does that. There may be another department that provides something similar. I know on the fireside, we've got one that does. So each one has different types of coverage.
Any more questions?
So has the money already been given out for this year?
For some, not all.
You're talking about the rescue?
Yes.
Who's not got?
I hope not.
I'd like to see it skip to a point where we can split it, maybe 50/50 based on your calls. If we're giving out 15 times, what'd you say, six? So $90,000?
Right.
I'd like to say $45,000 of that is split equally. The other 45 is pro-rata based on your calls you actually made.
Well, since some of the departments have already received their funding for this year, I would suggest that this be looked at in depth during the budget process and determined that with adoption of the budget to have a set schedule on how the funds are to be prorated.
Right. Anything else? We'll move on to old business, property donations.
I have four different property owners that have indicated either to our office or to the treasurer's office if they would like to donate parcels back to the county. Some of these involve only one parcel, very small parcels in some cases. There's one in the Rose Hill area. There's one in Ben Hur. There's about, I think there's four in the St. Charles area in general, not right in St. Charles. One is, but some of them are just in that area. And I think that's it. So I can, I didn't have a chance. I tried to do the research on these and didn't have a chance to make copies, full copies of a package for each. I've got just one copy of each right now. But I do have a color map with an outline of probably where that parcel is at. And I can provide that to you within the next few days.
Questions? Thank you, Mr. Poe. The next thing on the old business agenda is duplication of C.
Yes, I just spotted that many ago.
And we'll move on to F, which is website redesign.
On the website redesign, the board adopted a motion to advertise a request for proposals. That's not something we had requested before. So I went to my normal chief chief and went to some other counties to see in the region to see if any of them had put out an RFP for these services in the last couple of years to borrow the information from it. Got responses back from actually all three of our neighbors. Scott County, Wise County and City of Norton. I think Wise County was one. It may just be City of Norton and Scott County. Both of them have used City Plus, which is a nationwide company that does different things in the city area. They are under, and they had very good responses and reviews back on the work that they did for them. Scott County actually is just unveiling a new website. I haven't seen it yet. Norton went through this with them a couple of years ago. And Norton, more than a common state, came back with, and what Scott County has seen so far is that once it's up and running, that it is very easy for local staff to update information and keep it up to date and things of that nature. But City Plus is under, they are on state contract. We would not have to go through procurement if you wanted to use them. Or we could simply select two or three companies and ask them to come in and do a demo of what they could do. If you want, go ahead and just go out and request a proposal. We can do that as well.
Are they, so it's fact?
There is, again, Scott is just getting ready to unveil theirs, but their administrator was very complimentary of the process of them redesigning theirs. but their administrator was, was very complimentary of the process of them redesigning theirs. Uh, and, uh, City of Norton, the city manager, uh, he was the one that commented about how easy it was for their staff to use the website and keep it updated. And that they had a good relationship with City Plus.
Uh, my suggestion is that that's who we go with if they're already in the area.
Well, I mean, they're, they're nationwide.
Yeah, I know.
But they do have two, two local county or city and county areas.
So how'd you say you get around with procurement with that?
They're under state contract. Anybody that has state, has an existing state contract, you do not have to appear to be neither regular than state contract with that.
I would make a motion that, uh, go ahead. I, I, I would, uh, make a motion that we put it out, uh, you know, because if you just look at one person, I mean, you're set at one price of your, their mercy. There's no competition factor in that.
Sorry, could y'all, and I was gonna say, we've got people in the county that do that. I hate to step over them to not give them at least an opportunity to be heard on what they would charge.
I agree with that.
Okay, so I'll try to...
We can always fall back.
I'll try to get an RFP out within a few weeks.
Move on. New business, board of board, Spearhead Trails. Harold Durrell was presently on there and he tabled that last month, probably.
Uh, yes, and I couldn't find anybody to ask Sydney here. He said, yes, I'm going to take that.
Did you all have anyone?
No.
Jane Jones said she'd be glad to serve on it.
That a motion?
Yes.
I had a motion to appoint Jane Jones, Spearhead Trails.
And is that on Trailblazer, that one?
That's Trailblazer.
Trailblazer, yeah, I'm sorry. Uh, did I hear a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? If none, all favors signify the same. Aye, aye, aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Next is Dryden Water Authority. And we tabled that last month because we did not have a representative for District Four.
Mr. Sherman, I, I'd like to request a little more time.
To table?
Yes.
Okay. Motion to table.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All favors signify the same. Aye, aye, aye. Next is, uh, the Building Code Appeals. There's two appointments. Greg Resnick has resigned and...
Well, oh, okay. I'm not sure if that's a resignation or... Okay, okay.
Yeah, I think he's got some sickness in his family he's got to deal with.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion to table five of them.
Okay. Second. Uh, I have a motion to table both Building Code Appeals. And a second. Any discussion? All favors signify the same. Aye, aye, aye. Next is the Crooky Grove.
Buddy Pressler, he's, he's dead.
Yes.
He's dead.
Yeah, that's why we need another one.
Buddy Pressler, Crooky Grove. I've got one. Nobody else has one. I'd like a motion for Brian Hogan for Crooky Grove.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All favors signify the same. Aye, aye, aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Next is the Planning Commission. And here again, we had two recent, uh, people to resign. And I don't think that anybody has anybody figured out yet. I had talked to somebody today, but his work schedule, he interferes with meetings and he will not be able to do that, so. And I'd make the motion to table both of these till next month.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All favors signify the same. Aye, aye, aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Airport Authority. What's, what's the new business on that, Mr. Poe?
That's, uh, Mr. Gilbert's resignation.
Oh, okay. No action needed. Next is the Department, will you hit somebody?
You missed that, uh, Spearhead Trails Recreation.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Thank you. Southwest Regional Recreation Authority, Spearhead Trails. And that was a resignation by Kevin Allred. Anybody have anybody in line up for that? If not, motion to table.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All favors signify the same. Aye, aye. Now, to the Airport Authority, with Lanny Gilbert resigning and he's my opponent, I'll make a motion to appoint Corey Healy to the Airport Authority. And that's a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All favors signify the same. Aye, aye. Thank you. Motion carries a second. Okay, Mr. Caldwell, staying. Next, Mr. Sherman?
Yes. Could I, could I ask that we go back up to number two, the Dryden Water Authority?
Yeah.
There is someone who feels opposition.
Okay.
Yeah, I just wanted to table mine. No, it wasn't the Water Authority. It was, uh, I'm sorry.
Who? You have somebody in line?
Patsy Quill. She, she's the, uh, has been current manager for...
Yeah, okay. I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Uh, have a...
I'd like to make a motion that we reappoint her.
Yes. I have a motion. Do I hear a second? Motion and a second. Any discussion? All favors signify the same. Aye, aye. Motion carries. Next on, uh, new business, Department of Social Services board members salary increase.
Ray, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to ask a question. What's third? Will they get paid a month now?
Well, the, the request is not to increase, uh, to increase it completely, but just for the months of June, July, August and September of last year, they had multiple meetings because of lost staff, uh, vacancies. And they're asking that they be provided an additional, uh, amount for those four months because of the extra meetings.
They want a one-time pay?
That's how I read it.
How many meetings do we have per month per budget time?
Oh, so we're around fourteen.
That is kind of, I'm trying to find in my packet here, I read it. The way I read it, that they were asking, yeah, there you go. An additional one hundred dollars per month. And for the chairman and that the board members, they compensated an additional seventy-five per month. How much do they get paid now?
Right, that's seventy-five a month to each.
They gonna make more now, maybe. Not obvious for money or anything, but that's, you know. Up to the board. Approved, tabled. Disapproved.
Disapproved. I'm most would take no action on it.
I have a motion to take no action. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All votes in favor signify the same. Aye, aye, aye.
Second.
And Mr. Caldwell, staying. Because you said... Next is the K nine, uh, supply budget increase request from Sheriff's Department. Want to touch on that, Mr. Poe?
They were budgeted two thousand for the year for K nine supplies. Uh, since the time the budget was passed, they have acquired a second K nine. Uh, this has caused them to be over budget at this point, uh, within, just within six months of the year, about three hundred dollars. But the board provided an additional fifteen hundred dollars to get through this budget year and then to increase the budget amount to thirty-five hundred dollars during the next budget year.
Make a motion to approve the request.
Second, motion to approve. Do I hear a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All votes in favor signify the same. Aye, aye. Motion carries. Next on the agenda, reports and recommendations of the county attorney.
I don't have anything to report. I would request closed session for, uh, some joint issues concerning zoning and building and stuff.
Okay.
And litigation.
Berar reports and recommendations of the county magistrate.
Got a couple of items.
Ah.
I don't think I had any last month. A few months ago, uh, well, probably about three or four, the board, uh, has a motion to purchase a fireproof trash can and put it at the dock parking lot. Uh, Mr. Caldwell wanted to make a motion. When I got back to him on what cost of those are, they're, they're a metal one. They're anywhere from a thousand dollars and up. And, uh, he said, well, let's see if we can't come up with another option. So we looked at the proposal to possibly building our own. So, uh, Mr. Caldwell's worth has gotten back with me. They can do a, a double can model, uh, or a single can. A single can, materials only, uh, with the latches. And this includes a thirty-two gallon trash can to put inside of the, of the metal housing that would go in. Uh, total cost on that would be three hundred and twenty-nine dollars plus the labor, which is in-house labor to construct it. Six hundred and eighteen to do a double, uh, can of that. So just bring it back to the board and see how you want to proceed on that.
My opinion on that is you don't want to put something too big there because people will be all asking household trash or get rid of it instead of it. What you got, your vehicle that you want to get first.
They not make them have a dumpster? If they, an old dumpster that the bottom's out of or something's wrong with it, they not...
Well, they, they repair those and we reuse them. We buy bottoms. That's what we just did a couple of months ago. We buy the bottoms and replace those and keep using them as long as we can. And if they're to the point that the side wall metal is starting to fail or getting that bad, it's probably not worth putting out there with this.
I mean, the cost type, the cost type for your, uh, gas and everything to cut it up to the places that they, you'd have, what'd you say, three hundred and twenty-nine dollars?
Three hundred and twenty-nine dollars in materials. And that includes the can.
Anybody in the property, any thoughts on that?
I would do this for one.
Yeah, I guess that.
Cause if you do any, you, you take that book, right?
Yeah, it'd be running over. It'd be worse than this here, what, what there is now.
I'd make a motion for that, whatever that three hundred and twenty-nine dollar cost to build can.
I have a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? If not, all votes in favor signify the same. Aye, aye, aye. Motion carries.
Uh, second out of my head, uh, we had a, one of the police crews was recently red and torn. Uh, one of the chargers, one of the newer chargers. Uh, and I'm sorry, I don't have a year model on that, but...
Two nineteen.
Twenty nineteen? Okay. Uh, we have received insurance settlement on that. Uh, we received, uh, right at twenty-eight thousand dollars, uh, insurance settlement. Uh, the sheriff's office has found a twenty-twenty Dodge Charger police vehicle, which, uh, one, one year newer, uh, with twenty-six thousand something miles on it. It is in Tampa, Florida, uh, and the asking price on it is twenty-one ninety-nine five. We would, uh, we, we'd have the radios from the old vehicle to transfer over into it. Our cost would be to put striping on the vehicle, which is about, uh, nine hundred dollars. Uh, to add, to pay to have the radio installed, it's not just a few hundred dollars. And, uh, the major said they probably would have to put, or would want to put a B, uh, push button on the front. Uh, I don't have the exact cost on that, but we would, we could have this one equipped on the road instead of a thousand dollars. And he's asking permission. It's out of dealer in Florida. He has talked with them. And, uh, they said if they let them know more, they'd hold it. Of course, we'll have the expense of sending two officers down, pick it up, uh, get it overnight through and get them down there and back, so.
I'd make a motion to accept that, but on one condition, I think, and I talked to the major about it this afternoon. Uh, he said, I, I asked him about it before they make the purchase to make sure that they haven't been under, underwater or something like that.
The, the CarPAC report on it, I think, said no accidents.
Yeah, I told him it could probably easily, easily be checked.
Yeah, they probably should be able to get that assumption. If you won't make that, uh, contingency in the motions.
I have a motion. Do I hear a second? Motion and a second. Any discussion? If not, all favors signify the same. Aye, aye, aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
And other than that, the only other thing I have is, uh, request for closed session under contracts, personnel, and of course, we had the pending litigation already.
Thank you. Next, reports and recommendations of the board. Mr. Schmidt, if you have any?
I don't have any.
Mr. Poe, would we find that on the request for the blogger? Do we need a blogger?
Oh, uh, I meant to, uh, put that on there. That, uh, there's nothing wrong with ours, uh, the one that's two-nine-one-one now. Those things are pink. Uh, I've never seen one that is and I've seen another opposite. They're a little pinky, but they always work. It's just sometimes it takes a little manipulating to get them to work. Uh, when I talked to Rex about it, he said this one works the same as it always has ever since it was moved, but it does still work. Uh, in talking with Mr. Edwards about it, he said it would be nice to have one possibly for the, the upper two floors of the building resident just downstairs. Uh, my recommendation on this would be to look at this, uh, during the budget cycle as a budget purchase if we feel that it's necessary.
On, uh, District Johnson's twenty thousand dollar grant, we need to take action on that or...
No, uh, that was included, the, the match and everything on that was included in the budget.
Okay. How about the RFP for the, uh, Briggis Airport?
Uh, working on that. That'd be going out jointly.
Uh, probably six months ago, I brought up my tweet from the fire department. Said if they got an alarm at the courthouse, they had no idea where to go.
Yeah, I haven't had a chance to run that down, but we'll try to isolate that within the next thirty days.
Someone from B-Doc reached out and said they received a bill from the county for picking up roadside litter, uh, and taking it to the transfer station. I don't recall us authorizing anyone to send a bill to B-Doc.
Uh, they may have, now, they may have given them, or they may have gotten an invoice for picking fee. But if it was for what they picked up on the roadside, we can adjust that out, offset the checkup.
Can you reach out, sir? Apparently you're upset with this.
Okay, uh, which, which...
Drive.
Yeah, okay.
Why would they be upset if they don't pick the trash up?
They picked the orange bags up. They bring them, the cage only.
At all times.
All the works programs do, virtually is done by B-Doc.
How petty right there. I mean, they're not picking up any trash at all and then we're gonna refund them a little cost.
My understanding is that they didn't finish the paving at the transfer station, but they were told to stop where they were because we sent them a bill, and so that was their way of retaliating. So it may be worth it not to send them a bill. We can get some free payment when they have leftovers. That's all I had. So that's closed session, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Leonard, do you have a...
Yeah, I got two things. Mr. Poe, what about the AT&amp;T NBOs that we authorized? Where are we?
We, notice we've given them purchase orders on two of them, and I need a location on a third. We...
That shouldn't hold them up for...
No, they should be able to start on those other two because we've given them a P.O. on those.
Right.
I'll check with them and see where they're at.
And that dead spot past where you turn off goes to airport, and you start going toward the road to it. Would one of those build the void for that code?
No, because of those curves, you've only got at max about a quarter mile range, and you probably couldn't shoot it through there, and it would only be good for the highway.
I mean... AT&amp;T has, or is AT&amp;T NBO?
Yeah.
That wouldn't help us with ride.
No. That deal is, I mean, even my AT&amp;T service, sometimes off there, sometimes it'll drop if it gets a momentary. It's just, it's just a low spot elevation-wise.
I think if there's not another spot, I think right there around Lehigh, there's a dead spot. AT&amp;T through there. Occasionally, there's a dead area right in there. Because I live service when I live here, you know, just for a short space there. Sometimes even up there around where the trash dumpsters are, right along in there.
So the one was going to sink to Stone Creek, and the one to...
Ross Chatham.
Ross Chatham.
I thought the third was going to stick with you.
There was no definite decision by none of them. There's a pause.
Remember, I didn't work good over there. That AT&amp;T dropped them.
Yeah, I'll, no, I got one more thing. I'd like to make a motion for a reboot on private landfill.
I have a motion. Do I hear a second?
Mr. Chairman, I don't think it's appropriate because there's no advertisement for a vote about it right now. There's no public hearing on it.
Yeah. Mr. Poe?
It's been adopted as ordinance about, on that. I mean, Robert's rules allows for a motion to recall a vote where it deals with an ordinance that's been adopted. We don't know, because ordinances can only be changed by act of holding the public here. I refer that to County Attorney. And that may, it may take a little research in Robert's book to see exactly what the answer is. I'm certain a lot of expert on parliamentary procedure.
Leonard, you want to withdraw that motion?
No, I just, you know, as far as I'm concerned, we don't have, you know, have to take it up, but I wanted to be put to record that I did make that motion.
You have anything else?
No, sir, thank you.
Mr. Jesse, do you have anything, recommendations or... I don't have much. What about Jasper Site, Mr. Poe?
Jasper Site, we have submitted an application for special use permit before the Planning Commission. I did check with the E.Q. on that. The E.Q. has no role whatsoever in convenience centers. We made that very clear. They do have some guidelines on where to locate and how to control this, so, you know, things of that nature, general things that we look at anyway, but they have no permitting authority or role with that at all.
Has the trash gone down over there since we...
Yes, since it's been closed on Sundays, the volume on Mondays is greatly reduced. That's at both sites, both the Gibson Station site and the Jasper site. And actually, I think the tonnage is running less at Jasper period simply because it's not open on Sunday.
We don't need to be paying all other people's trash, huh? I guess we're going into closed session.
I'd make a motion to go into closed session for seventeen point two dash thirty-seven eleven. So they, one personnel, five respective business, twenty-nine contracts, eight consultation with counsel, seven discussion and threat preventing litigation, and three acquisitions or disposition of property.
I'll second that. All in favor signify the same. Aye, aye, aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.